I would like to call this meeting of the Principal County School Board to order. A motion is in order for the approval of the meeting agenda.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. I move that the Principal County School Board approve the meeting agenda as recommended.
Okay. Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Any discussion?
I second.
At least a second, thank you. Any discussion? Please vote. Hi, it's coming up.
So the vote is five yes, one not present at vote, Jessie, two absent, Latif, Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on, the motion to enter, to the motion to enter closed session, a motion is in order.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Jackson.
I move that pursuant Virginia Code 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, that the Principal County School Board enter a closed session for the following reasons: one, to discuss with staff the appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific officers and employees under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, one; two, to review disciplinary matters for specific students that would involve the disclosure of information contained in scholastic record for individuals and receive legal advice regarding same as provided Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, two, and eight; three, to discuss with division counsel and staff actual or probable litigation and legal matters pertaining to the school board and specific staff and students, including matters involving the Freedom of Information Act under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, seven, and eight; four, to consult with staff and legal counsel regarding the legal requirements and procedures for collective bargaining by school board employees, which requires legal advice and guidance as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, eight; five, to discuss with division counsel and staff resolution of litigation involving opioids pursuant Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, eight, A, seven, and eight; six, to discuss with legal counsel and staff members the acquisition of real property for a high school Woodbridge area, which is subject of litigation pending within Principal County Circuit Court, and where briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and litigating posture of PWCS pursuant Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, three, and A, seven, and seven, to discuss and receive briefings by staff members relating to the security of school facilities and the safety of persons using such facilities and actions taken to respond to such matters, where a discussion in an open meeting would jeopardize the security of such facilities pursuant Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, nineteen.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams?
A second.
Okay, is there discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Latif, Ralston, motion passed.
Okay, the Principal County School Board will now enter closed session and return to open session in approximately one hour. The Principal County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. A motion is in order?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Jackson.
I move that pursuant Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Principal County School Board meeting of March 1st, 2023, be certified by adopting the following resolution: now, therefore, be it resolved that the Principal County School Board hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Is there a second?
Ms. Wall. I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No, seeing none, please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Latif, Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on to closed session action items, a motion is in order for 10.01.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Jackson.
I move that the Principal County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presenting in closed session.
Is there a second?
Ms. Wall. I second.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Latif, Ralston, motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to 10.02, a motion is in order.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Jackson.
I move that for the reasons set forth in the Student Management and Alternative Program Department's SMAPD letter of January 27th, 2023, the Principal County School Board confirms staff's recommendation for the expulsion of student MS23-105, and that the Principal County School Board also approved the conditions and recommendations for re-admission, any non-traditional education eligibility determination contained in January 27th, 2023 letter, the student's placement at the time of re-admission if recommended by SMAPD and SMAPD's recommendation regarding eligibility for computer-based instruction while on expulsion. The student shall be eligible to petition for re-admission effective 365 days from the date of the school board's decision.
Thank you. And before we move on, I wanted to share that Chairman Latif will not be here this evening if he was called out of town. I think we need to vote on that. Yeah, do we have a second on that motion?
A second.
Ms. Williams, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Ralston, Chairman Latif, motion passed.
All right. So now we will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll have our student representative, Chance Williams, lead us in the pledge here tonight. Thank you.
All right. It's time for one of the most enjoyable portions of our school board meetings, which is launching thriving futures. We dedicate this time during our meetings to recognize students, staff members, or schools who have earned an honor or award at the state or national level. We appreciate how these honorees have positively represented Principal County's public schools, and the school board is proud to recognize them publicly for their accomplishments. So tonight, we are excited to recognize several state athletic champions. And I will lead out. As the Gainesville Magisterial District Representative, it is my pleasure this evening to introduce the first group of students. I am thrilled to recognize our state champions in gymnastics and swimming from Battlefield High School. So let's see, you got a lot of names here. Ryan Grothoff with a score of 9.75 is the state champion on the balance team. Can you raise your hand? Where are you? Okay, there you go. And Jordan Ignacio with a score of 9.7 is the state champion for the floor exercise. Raise your hand. There you go. I want to add that Jordan tied for third place on the balance beam, and Ryan placed second in the floor exercise. Their coaches are Emily Ignacio and Mary Henry. Coaches, raise your hand. There you go, okay. I invite one or both of, well, I invite you to come forward to share a few words about our gymnasts.
I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate Ryan and Jordan on behalf of Mary and I. They did a very excellent job this season. On top of competing for Battlefield, they also do club gymnastics, so they have very busy schedules. And they had the team competition on Friday and individual on Saturday, and for both days, they did very excellent, and we're just really proud of them. Congratulations, girls.
Thank you. Very awesome. Thank you so much for coming here, so we could congratulate you. Battlefield High School can also boast about state champions in swimming. I will begin with Camille Spink. Raise your hand. There you go. Who earned first place in the 50-yard freestyle, the 100-yard freestyle, the 200-yard freestyle relay, and the 400-yard freestyle relay. Madison Richardson is the state champion in the 200-yard freestyle relay. You want to raise your hand? Okay, there you go. And 400-yard freestyle relay. And Sophie Hayden. There you go. Were in first place in the 200-yard freestyle relay and 400-yard freestyle relay. And Emma Hanam. That's our last person, right? Is she here? Yeah, okay, there you are. Were in first place in the 200-yard freestyle relay. And Alyssa Sagel earned a first-place medal in the 400-yard freestyle relay. Wow, congratulations, everybody. Our coaches are Jay Thorpe and Evan Brandt. And the administrator here tonight, supporting all of Battlefield High School champions, is Assistant Principal Chris McMillan. Thank you for being here. Coaches, please come forward to share a few remarks about our swimmers.
I promise I won't read all this. But first, I just wanted to thank the board for inviting us and having this recognition. I know that it means a lot to our girls. We had an excellent season, and I'm just so proud of these girls. They couldn't have done any more at state than they did, and it was just an outstanding meet. Had a couple things I did want to mention really quick. We do have two seniors that are going to be departing us. That's Emma Hanam. She was state champion in the 200 freestyle relay this year, but she was also a career state champion three times in her career, and also a three-time All-American. Next year, she's going to be swimming at Maris College. And then Camille Spink, state champion in four events this year, but also a career 12-time state champion, 20-time All-American, and an Olympic Trials qualifier. And she's going to be swimming at the University of Tennessee in the fall. Twenty-three, oh, I'm sorry. I slighted you. I'm sorry. There's so many, they just get lost sometimes. And then with our returners, Sophie Hayden, this was her first state championship, and she's projected as an All-American in that event. Madison Richardson, state champion in the 200 freestyle and 400 freestyle relays, which she is projected to be All-American in both of those events, and was an All-American for us last year as well. And then Alyssa Sagel, our freshman, state champion in the 400 freestyle relay. I did want to mention that she was second in the backstroke. I think that does count. And then projected All-American in that event, as well as the 100 backstroke. You know, with these girls, I never cease to be amazed by what these ladies accomplish in the water, but I'm most impressed by the great young people that they've become. They understand what it takes to succeed, and they have the drive to make it happen. Couldn't be any more proud of them. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much. And the family members of these athletes, please stand so we can recognize you, because we know you have a large part to play in their success. All right. Thank you very much. And we'll take a photo, I think, after we go through the athletes. Okay. We also have state champions in swimming from Forest Park High School here with us tonight, along with a state champion in wrestling. So Mr. Wilk Potomac Magisterial District will share more with us about these student athletes.
This is exciting, because I was at districts, and I saw the team beat Colgan, which is always nice. Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Wall. It's my pleasure to recognize Dawson Trung, state swimming champion in the 100-yard breaststroke, and Delaney Bookstein, state champion of the 500-yard freestyle. Both attend, of course, the amazing Forest Park High School. Their coach is Julie Denard. Ms. Denard, please come forward if you'd like to say a few words.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight. I am so proud of these two. I have had the pleasure of watching them swim the last four years, and they have gone out on top of their game in the high school swimming. They have balanced year-round and high school swimming perfectly, and they have led their teams this year as captains, and they have done so with great sportsmanship, and I'm just so proud of them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Also, I was able to be at Forest Park for Senior Night this year, but we are very proud of our state wrestling champion, Tyler Stewart. Tyler won the 215-pound weight class. Got to see it streaming on Facebook, so congratulations. He is here tonight with his coaches, Tommy Alloy and A.J. Eversley. Gentlemen, please come forward if you'd like to say a few remarks.
Hello, good evening. I'd like to thank you all for having us, and recognition of all these state champions, as well as Tyler. He's had a great season, you know, something like wrestling, it's a very long and grueling season. You know, it's a very tough sport, along with, you know, multiple workouts a day, weight management on top of that. It's a very tight schedule, you know, to manage for such a long time, but he managed it perfectly. You know, he got what we came for and got his state title at 215, 215. So, you know, congratulations, and we look forward to see what he has in the future. So, still undecided. We're still working on that at the moment, but I'm sure it's going to be nothing but great things. So, thank you for your continued support and recognition of all these state champions.
So congratulations to our swimmers and wrestlers from Forest Park High School. We're proud of your accomplishments. Very exciting. I'd like your family members to please stand and be recognized. Do we have some Forest Park families and parents? Again, we know how important parents are in the success of our students. So, before turning this over to Superintendent Dr. McDade, I want to add that we will continue to recognize our state athletic champions at future meetings, including the girls' wrestling state champion and indoor track champions on March 15th. Dr. McDade, I'm going to take it from here.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I want to just echo the sentiments that you've heard tonight and congratulate each and every one of you for your amazing accomplishments. I know as student athletes, it's a really grueling schedule. You have to juggle all of the commitments to compete, but you also have a pretty rigorous academic load as well, and so it takes a lot of sacrifice for that. And the characteristics that you demonstrate, such as drive, and persistence, and diligence, and resilience, are all characteristics that will take you through life in our transferable skills. So, you are to be commended. Congratulations. You have served, represented your teams, your school, and our entire county and school division well, and we're incredibly proud of you. Keep up the great work.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. Let's take a short break now and take a few pictures, starting with the Battlefield athletes, and then we'll conclude with a group picture of the Forest Park athletes.
All right, thank you. We are moving on to 13.01, Adoption of Consent Agenda. A motion is in order.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Jackson.
I move that the Principal County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Zargarpur, a second? Discussion?
Hi. I just wanted to-
Ms. Jessie.
Yes. I want to make a comment on 1309, the month of Military Child. I was at Springwood Elementary, and they are a Purple Star School, and they had a breakfast for military spouses. And I met the head of the Military Liaison Person for the school system, Ms. Kimberly Simpson. And I've been looking, you know, I love data, and I've looked at the data for quite some time. When we look at the data for students' performance and military students, they outperform most of us. They outperform the county, and it's consistently consistent. And I've had several military spouses work for me, and they hit the ground running. So, I want to congratulate Springwood's and to the military spouses, and to all the military families, thank you for being a part of our school system.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Zargarpur.
So on 13.20 is Transportation Employees Week. I want to thank everyone who works in transportation, from scheduling to driving buses to repairing our equipment, things like that. I know it's been really hard the past couple years, and I had a wonderful talk with Mr. Bach just recently about some ideas that we have for the next year. So, but I want to thank from the bottom of my heart those of you who do this work. I know the days can be very long. You're not just driving a bus, you're driving our children. You are driving K through 12. It's a big job, and I really appreciate it. And really also, quick, there's theater in our Schools Month. I have had an opportunity in the past few years to see some of the theatrical productions that our kids from elementary, middle, and high school do. So, it's, a lot of hard work goes into that. A lot of parents volunteer to do all kinds of things, from sets to costuming, to getting their kids back and forth to rehearsals. So, I just want to put a shout out for that, too. Thanks.
Yeah, I want to echo some of the sentiments Ms. Jessie made for the Military Liaison. You know, I was blessed, my wife, my father-in-law is a veteran and served in Vietnam, and having that unique perspective of marrying into a military family has been great. And the Potomac District has a large portion of military families, which is why so long I fought to make that a fully funded Military Liaison position, why Jen Wall and I created the 9/11 Curriculum Committee to honor the patriotism of our country. And it's been an absolute pleasure. I was able to sit on, as a parent, the Ashland Purple Star Committee, and Ashland, I think, was the second elementary school in the county to earn that a number of years ago. So, it was a great experience. Want to thank our military families, the students. You know, it's very transient, depending on where the deployment is or where the location is, and I want to thank our school system for all we do to support those families.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo what previous board members have said, and I also want to give a shout out to our procurement officers because it's procurement recognition month. We don't talk a lot about finance. Yes, Mr. Wellenford, I see you giving the cheers, because I'm always highlighting, as someone who has dabbled in procurement, how tough and tricky that job can be. Our finance department, our procurement team, consistently receives high ratings and keeps us on track and in alignment, and that's very important. I don't know how many of us see, generally, on our consent agenda, there's always a contract award for something or another, which means they're constantly doing the work to continue to keep our school division up and running and in compliance. In addition, I know that we have Youth and Art Month, and I just wanted to commend our clerks for continuing to provide our boardroom with wonderful student art. I see that this month, we have Ripon Middle School up here, and it's just always a pleasure as an art person. And I wanted to highlight music in our schools. I know Ms. Zargarpur did not, but she is our music teacher, so I just wanted to speak to that. I think we have wonderful arts programs here in all of our schools. They're all a little bit different, depending on what it is the program is related to, but we know that arts and music are integral to learning. So, thank you.
And I will add also for Music in Our Schools Month, music, value of music education cannot be, cannot say enough about how valuable it is. I know for my own family, it's been probably one of the most rewarding aspects of the education that they have received in Principal County Schools, that we have a very strong music program. A lot of our schools have just top-notch programs, and it is so important for students and often just adds to the quality of life. So, I wanted to highlight that. There are a lot of great things on this consent agenda. We could all talk probably about every single one of them. Are there any other discussion? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent. Chairman Latif, Ralston, motion passed.
All right, moving on to citizen comment time. Those citizens who have signed up in advance with the clerk may address the school board this evening when they are called to the podium. The citizen comment period for regular school board meetings is one hour, and citizens may speak on agenda items or other topics germane to the operations and policies of PWCS. Please, as a reminder, please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium, or you will be asked to step aside. We ask that the audience please be respectful of each speaker and refrain from clapping, jeering, or cheering to avoid disruption of the meeting. If you do not, the board will recess, and I will ask that the room be cleared to restore public order. Tonight, we have eight citizens signed up to speak. When I call your name, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, or you may say that the clerk has your address on file. So, our first speaker will be Marty Weaver, followed by Carol Fox.
Hi, Marty Weaver, Okaquan. Privilege. My dad and mom were 20 and 14 when they eloped in 1950. I was born 16 months later, with two brothers born three and six years thereafter. My mom completed the ninth grade. My dad graduated from high school a year late because of a sickly childhood. We started out as a family in the inner city of Columbus, Ohio. I attended kindergarten in a public school that was decades old, but I was just excited to go to school. Then I went to the neighborhood Catholic school for first to third grades, where I was a poor white girl who was privileged to be in another old building with kids from- was a poor white girl who was privileged to be in another old building with kids from the Catholic orphanage down the street. And that orphanage was also where my great-grandma, on my mom's side, and her three siblings went to live after their immigrant mom died, and when their railroad worker dad couldn't take care of them. And they were listed as inmates on the 1900 census at the orphanage asylum. And my dad's dad was dumped in another orphanage in Columbus after his parents divorced. My grandpa left there as a young teen to live on the streets because that was better. He lied about his age and joined the Navy at 16. My mom's dad lost his left leg as a kid in a sledding accident. He used crutches his entire life, well, until late in life when his other leg had to be amputated below the knee because of diabetes. Then he used a wheelchair and still lived by himself. But that was after he had been married for many years and raised eight kids. And he drove a stick-shift car using a crutch for the clutch, no special vehicle. So my story began with some hardship, no privilege. My family worked hard, valued education. My mom made sure we could read and comprehend. She took us to the library and read with us. Remember, she only completed the ninth grade. Did I mention I was bullied as a kid for being cross-sided? I graduated 10th in my high school class of over 200. I graduated from Ohio State University with a bachelor's degree in nursing, and I became a certified critical care nurse for 12 years in the ICU/CCU. I used the lessons learned from my parents in raising our son. I volunteered during our son's education at all grade levels. He worked hard and with our support graduated fourth in his class from OPs, first class of the SEBS program. He went on to graduate from the Air Force Academy. No one did my work or our sons. We reached our goals not because of privilege, but because of hard work using the opportunities that were afforded all of the students and parental involvement. So stop the whining about equity, hold students and parents accountable, stop making excuses for why someone can't succeed on their own merit. You don't need more money, pools, Steinways, indoor tracks, equity people. What it really takes is involved parents. Let us. Some say it takes a village, but not when the village is led by some idiots. Parents matter.
Carol Fox.
Good evening, Carol Fox, on file. Last week, I came before you and I gave you information about the four data centers that are under construction one-fourth mile of Tyler and Pace West. I know now that you are aware of this, but I really don't think you believe. So tonight, I brought pictures of the construction site showing you. They are, this was taken in the top floor of a stacked condo. The second picture is the street view of the condo. I did circle the light posts so you could see how it looks in real life. This condo is just one block from Washington Street, and the street entrance to Tyler and Pace West is directly across the street. At this time next year, the interior work will be underway, and the turn-on date for these data centers are expected to be somewhere in the neighborhood of the summer or fall of 2025. That gives you two years, two years to prepare. You need to hire your consultants to tell you what you will need to do when one data center comes online, and then the second, and then the third, and then the fourth. You are approving contracts tonight. How long did it take to determine the scope of work for those contracts? Who put out the work bid? Who reviewed the contracts and chose how to award the contracts? Have you started planning yet for what's going to happen to your schools in two years? Who went to the Department of Environmental Equality on Monday, meeting on Monday? I did not see any of you there. It will be a reality that these data centers will use diesel generators in place of electricity during times of stress on our grid. That will occur during May, June, September, and possibly into October of the year. These will be at least six generators for each data center running. There is about three, the one that they're currently under construction on University is 300 megawatts. That will take six 50-megawatt generators. So we have a real time to start planning for it. The noise pollution that's going to be coming with those data centers, not to mention the air pollution that'll be coming, affect the children that we have in school that have asthma and other illnesses. So have you planned for this? What is your plan? Have you all started looking into it yet? There are money that, you're going to need special money to fix these schools, because they're going to need special windows and special things going on with them. Or maybe it's better if you just build new schools, someplace far away where it's quieter. Do you have you talked to the County Board of Supervisors about increasing your budget? Remember, every dollar spent on the western end will be less money that you have to spend on the eastern end, on Mr. Jessie's new high school and track, and all the other schools that need help on the eastern end. I really feel sorry for them. We all are going to be in trouble with our money that has to be appropriated out in the next few years. Thank you very much, have a nice evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Stephen Spiker, followed by Magali Hurtado.
Hi, good evening. Stephen Spiker, my address is on file. I'm addressing you today on something that is often overlooked, which is buses. I know we were just talking about that. So I know that you are, of course, aware we're facing a bus driver shortage in the county. I know that you guys have outlined some steps to address that. I really do appreciate you for that. Given that we're in the middle of budget process right now, I just want to impress upon you that this needs to be more top of mind, and it's for a very simple reason. Buses are not just a matter of operations or logistics. This is an academic concern. I'll take you back to last December, Thursday, the 15th. We were anticipating an ice storm around the region. Other counties and areas in the region announced a two-hour delay, but not in Prince William. Prince William, we announced that our schools would be closed. We were the only ones to announce that, and it was due solely to the fact that we didn't have the bus drivers to accommodate a two-hour delay. So notifications went out, emails went out, that it was going to be a code orange, or asynchronous learning, meaning it's still going to count as a school day. But I promise you, on that short notice, with parents scrambling to find coverage for a school day, no learning got done. Essentially, schools get credit for a day of instruction that every student was absent for. We learned a lot of lessons during the pandemic, but perhaps the most central one is this: Kids need to be in classrooms. Virtual learning was and is a disaster. And as, looking through the budget materials, I actually really do appreciate that you guys delineate between what's considered instructional spending and other spending. And so I will repeat again and want to impress this upon you, anything that keeps kids in classrooms should be considered instructional. In the meantime, I beg of you, please improve communications with parents. When buses are late, buses are delayed, this is an immediate failure and one parents are seeing nearly every day. To put simply, the app doesn't work half the time, and school officials have to scramble to update their parents. This is on top of all the work that they have to do normally, and this is not tenable. This has come up at SAKI meetings I've been to, it's been brought up at every single parent advisory council meeting, sorry, principal advisory council meeting that I help lead, and I hear frustration from school officials because they actually don't have any control over this. I also hear this frustration from other parents as well. The worst feeling a parent can have is not knowing where their kids are when it's time for them to come home. And every parent has a horror story. They check the app and the bus is halfway to Culpeper. But we have no recourse to ask for updates from our school staff, and I know because we asked them about this. They can only send communications to us when they know what's going on, and sometimes that's not even till the bus is leaving the parking lot after it's been routed back to the school to pick up kids who don't have a bus to take them home. So please, help out our kids, help out our school staff, and help out our parents by addressing these communications issues and keeping kids in classrooms. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Magali.
Good evening, my name is Magali Hurtado, my address is on file with the clerk. I work at one of our schools, not instructional staff, but I'm here today as the mother of two Old Bridge Elementary students, and as what you would call an involved community member, like the nosy lady on everyone's business. I'm beyond grateful for the education and nurturing my kids are getting at Old Bridge. Their teachers are truly extraordinary, and they go to great lengths to keep the kids learning and engaged. Both of my kids are thriving and loving school. They get great, 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 sorry. And I really do not worry about where they stand academically or emotionally. My kids participate in several extracurricular activities, and I have the opportunity to talk to other kids and parents from different schools in the county on a regular basis. So I know I am not alone in the concern that I will be sharing today. I do understand that a lot of the testing requirements come from the state, and our county must follow them. But we need your help advocating for our kids and to work with our county leadership to minimize the overwhelming amount of testing our kids are taking. I appreciate the fact that we are making decisions based on data, but I wonder how close are we to crossing that line between using data for decision-making and turning our schools into data-collecting places instead of the teaching institutions they need to be? With all the data we are collecting, is there a way to quantify what the overtesting is doing to our students? How are we feeding their anxiety and what that's doing to their emotional health? How much actual instruction they're missing to take yet another test? What is this doing to our teachers who want to teach? How many opportunities to engage and connect are they missing because they have to spend so much time testing and grading? I recently received a letter from the Supervisor of Testing informing parents that the Department of Education, Virginia, developed a new type of question for the SOLs, and now students in certain grades need to take a field test to test the test, a test to test the test. It would be a cute tongue-twister, but it's actually the reality of what we're putting our children through. I don't know how long that test-to-test-the-test takes, but assuming it's 20 minutes, what can our students do with those 20 minutes, especially the ones that need additional support? There needs to be a better way. I want our kids to love learning, to be curious and engaged, and not to be driven by just trying to do good in the test, and we need your help for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Oveta Scott, followed by Patience Jeffress.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Madam Chair and Dr. McDay. My name is Oveta Scott, and my address is on file with the clerk. Although the agenda was changed, I'm still going to speak on what I feel are updates to our education system for the second quarter. In my new role as an elementary math coach, I have witnessed what I believe is the reason for low performance in some classroom, and that is the lack of content knowledge from the presenter of the instruction. Now, I would never stand here and blame my colleagues, but a real educator will take time in planning and how they will execute a lesson to their students. I will state that the failure of students not receiving important content knowledge falls on administration, and I don't mean to build in principles. I was reviewing decimal calculations, I was reviewing decimal calculations with students, and I asked them if they could tell me what a decimal is, not what it looks like, but the definition. Now, one student could answer me from that grade level. I went to our 25-page unit curriculum guides, and the answer was not there. Nowhere does it state to give background information so that students understand what and how a decimal works. I know what you're thinking, that that's the duty of the teacher, to provide that understanding, but how can they admin hires individual without background content knowledge in math, history, science, or language arts? The KLC has various solutions to assist teachers in delivering effective instruction. The new and popular answer are the Canvas modules. It has a huge buffet of many examples to supplement instruction. Instructional coaches, who are support staff, who can't find the time within the school day to provide assistance needed to struggling staff or students since they rotate between schools. But my favorite is the professional development staff meeting, which wastes time talking about cute classroom management techniques that doesn't address the need for given time to develop real engaging lessons for students. My answer is simple. Teachers need uninterrupted planning time with their coach, mentor, or department chair to truly unpack content to meet the objectives required in SOL strands. However, with the 45-minute planning at elementary and the new seven-period schedule at the middle grades, this is a challenging task to achieve. Thank you.
Patience Jeffress.
Good evening. I'm not a public speaker. I stand before you today as a concerned parent. I had to write down what I wanted to say because honestly, I'm livid. It is not ethical, morally, nor politically correct to act out of anger. I'm a mother who has an important responsibility to set an example of how to properly handle situations. However, the school system has responsibilities as well. What type of example are Prince William County Schools setting? On February 15, 2023, my son was sexually assaulted in a urinal while using the bathroom in Belmont Elementary School. A student grabbed his genitals. There were four children present in the bathroom, because the other three, who happened to be friends with the other child, said it didn't happen. My son sat in class with the same boy who assaulted him the very next day. He was expected to continue coming to school, but I pulled him out. On Monday, February 13, 2023, my son told me he didn't want to attend school because the previous Monday, a child had pushed him down while playing and said something obscene, I can't say it. He was not suspended, nor were the other children. I made administration aware that my son didn't want to come to school because of this reason. In January, there was a child who took bubble gum and stuck it in his genital area and threw it on my son. That child was not suspended. In November, December, he was in a fistfight with a child. The child pushed him to the ground, my son fought back. My son nor that child were suspended. In October, there was a child who punched him while waiting in the line to be picked up from school, and the teacher saw it and simply just told him not to hit. None of these children were suspended, to my knowledge. So, the thing that I'm attesting today is the privacy policy. I understand you guys have to protect the privacy of the parents, but in a situation like myself and my son's, we should know what's being done to the children that are doing him wrong, because everyone is telling us that something is being done about it, but then when you turn around, nothing has been done. And I'm standing today against bullying, and something needs to be done about it. My child is a victim of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pedris Prater, followed by Jalen Custis.
Good evening, board. Dr. McDay, my name is Pedris Prater. I'm from the Neapsco District. Just want to say, good job, thank you for serving. I'm here because I think we can do a little bit better, and this one today is for you chance, Williams, is for Jalen White. And I'm talking about, everything rolls back towards suicide. In 1985, the second leading cause of death was suicide. I was born just a year before then. The leading cause of death amongst teens now, number one cause of death is suicide. So when I'm sitting back at home and I'm, of course, working for the Department of Education, and I learn that they've given several million dollars to Virginia Department of Education to address mental health issues in our classroom, I can only hope that we're taking a new approach to addressing the underlying issue. I'm also taking time to review legislative priorities. The past 30 days, there was a bill that worked itself through the Virginia Senate. It was Bill Number 818, and this talked about introducing curriculum, age-based appropriate curriculum into our schools, similar to models in other states across the nation, that would equip the students with the tools necessary to identify before they become into a crisis situation, how to prevent suicide. Currently, Virginia addresses mental health by stacking on counselors, which I think is great. What I'd like for us to do, this is my ask, Dr. McDay. I had an opportunity to review our legislative priorities, the one that was mentioned before us, September 7, 2022. Currently, it does not mention supporting legislation that deals with mental health curriculum. And if I need five- And if I need five board members, I will call each of you all, and I'll make a stronger case. I think next year, we need to introduce that line item, just to say that as a school system, we want our lobbyists, Mr. Counsel, to support bills that support mental health curriculum in our schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Jalen Custis.
Good evening, Dr. McDade, Madam Chair, and Board Members. My name is Jalen Custis. I reside in the Woodbridge District. On Monday night, I had the opportunity to attend one of the public forums about the new AI screening technology that the school board is considering implementing inside the middle and high schools. I thank everyone here for conducting that. It was very informative. However, most parents, at least in the district I live in, were very concerned about the drugs that continue to get inside our schools. These AI screening technologies, they are very amazing for preventing guns and weapons getting inside our school, but does not detect drugs. Fentanyl and other drugs are affecting our community greatly and leaving a negative impact on our families. Don't get me wrong, guns, weapons are unacceptable inside our schools. However, there are way more drugs and contraband getting inside our schools than weapons. One parent at this meeting made a very valid point that we should add drug-stiffing dogs, not the stereotypically scary dogs, but more child-friendly dogs that will quietly and effectively detect drugs inside our schools. Another big issue that parents brought up was bullying. They explained how their children were getting bullied and that the administration at their schools did nothing to hold those bullies accountable. One parent told me that she pulled her elementary-age child out of school in my district because of the bullying. An elementary kid, they shouldn't have to worry about that. And it's very, very, very unacceptable. I have seen firsthand the bullying that occurs inside our schools. Most students don't report these ifs and itses because they believe nothing will be done, and rightfully so. I have seen the disrespect students have given teachers. Why aren't these students being held accountable? Why aren't they facing proper disciplinary actions? You may ask me, what does this have to do with safety? How can a child be safe if their school, in their school, if they're getting bullied on a daily basis? How can a student effectively learn when another student is openly disrespecting a teacher? Weapons, drugs, and bullying must be addressed and taken seriously to keep students safe. My name is Jalen Custis, and I reside in the Woodbridge District. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. That wraps up our citizen comment time. Now, we'll move on to student representative time. Tonight, we have Chance Williams, senior at Forest Park High School, with us on the dais. Chance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening and happy Women's History Month. Throughout Black History Month, I took the time to define with my sisters exactly what history is. History is each and every one of us. I have made history. This board has made history, as it is mostly women. Dr. McDade has made history as the first woman and the first African American to lead Prince William County Schools. No doubt, her leadership, changes, and implementations have made history. It is important to make sure we are educating our kids of all ages on exactly what history is. History isn't just something that happens hundreds of years ago. We make history every day. Last week, I had the opportunity to lead a youth town hall panel hosted by Mayor Derek Wood of Dumfries. On this panel were students from various grade levels in Prince William County Schools who came together to address issues across the school division. Mr. Wilk had the chance to hear some of the concerns of the student body, but I'm here to make sure our entire board both hears and receives the message. There is an ongoing issue with Wi-Fi and internet connection within the county. As the majority of students complete work online, it may be time to revisit the internet speed and availability, especially at our IT and online CTE schools, whose students constantly access advanced programs that require higher bandwidth. According to the National Institute of Drug Abuse, drug use within teens has risen drastically following COVID. It has noticeably increased in Prince William County Schools. We are punishing the many students rather than the few who use and/or distribute drugs. High schools are choosing to close bathrooms rather than take strides to find those using drugs. Fake drugs are circulating throughout the county with fentanyl overdoses and Percocets. Instead of addressing it, we are hoping students will alert staff. In reality, the process of informing school staff, or snitching, on someone isn't as clean and neat as the county makes it seem. After seeing someone use drugs or witnessing something against the code of behavior, students must write a witness statement, sign it. This is bad practice, as we are training kids to provide reports and sign documents without parental knowledge. We are then punishing these kids that write reports. We are then exposing the kids to the person, which may lead to retaliation. If you want to use students as a resource for information, we must make it fair, safe, and a clean process to protect students who choose to alert to illegal activity. Many will point out the see something, say something, and while it is a valuable resource, many students don't believe it'll accomplish anything. I want to continue on to mental health. As rates of student mental health concerns rise, the county is prepared to support its students. The CDC recently released a report stating that one of the top three leading causes of death for adolescents from 14 to 19 is suicide. Our counselors need time to focus on student mental health concerns. Sometimes a phone call won't fix the issue. When students experience negative feelings, sometimes a phone call just can't solve the problem. It takes work, and perhaps a conversation is all that's needed. Students need to have a vent space where they'll talk about their thoughts, their feelings, without worries of hospitalization. Some of our students face incredibly horrible or difficult home circumstances. Often, school is their only outlet. We want our students to be able to talk openly and honestly with counselors, who are ready and willing to listen. Students are dealing with a lot. We have a pandemic, drug use, unsafe schools, anxiety, college applications, and classwork. We all have off days. We should not let those off days throw our students completely off course. The county is currently pursuing metal detectors, specifically Evolve Express security systems, to deter weapons from entering our schools. But those who really wish to do harm will find a way. The Student Senate was afforded the opportunity to participate in a demonstration and discussion on the Evolve Express system, and truthfully, its implementation worries me. It is time to stop reacting and start acting. We cannot wait till someone tries to bring a weapon into school. We must prevent that from happening in the first place. And the way to do that is to see what motivates someone to bring a weapon into a building. Most of the issues the county is faced with tie back to mental health. To address the drug use, what causes teens to want to smoke or vape? It's often due to depression and the want to fit in as everyone's doing it. What causes someone to want to bring a weapon to school? It's often anger or mental illness. To help your students, you must understand your students. One of the main things ailing your student body is mental health. How our schools address it can be the cure. To close out my remarks on a positive note, I'm going to drop a lot of positive things going on across the county. As of right now, we have a robotics team from nearly every area of the county going to the state championship this Friday and Saturday in Dalswell, VA. Also this Friday is the Forest Park High School Multicultural Night, which will showcase the diversity and backgrounds throughout the county. As I've stated before, Prince William County is the 10th most diverse county in the nation. We intend to highlight this diversity. This event is completely student-led and looks to be a roaring success. Student representative applications open this Monday for all rising juniors and rising seniors. Being the student representative to the Prince William County School Board can only be defined as extraordinary. I have learned so much and had the chance to be the voice for so many of our students. This is not a position to be taken lightly, but it comes with a chance to make change. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Move to Item 16, Superintendent's Time. Dr. McDade?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In addition to the athletic success we recognized earlier this evening, I would like to share that Prince William County Public Schools provides multiple opportunities for students to excel in the fine and performing arts. National Arts Education Month, which encompasses music in our schools, theater in our schools, and Youth Art Month, takes place every March. This month highlights the values of arts such as dance, media, music, theater, writing, and the visual arts in a child's well-rounded education. Our schools recognize the educational value of the arts to teach abstract thinking, innovative practices, and intentional play. And our teachers work to nurture the unique talents of our students, encourage creative exploration, and develop comprehensive skill sets transferable across curriculums. Because of these benefits, the strategic plan sets a goal of increasing student participation in fine and performing arts programming by 5% through access to opportunities like auditions, concerts, and exhibitions. We want all fine and performing arts students to participate in at least three extended learning experiences each year. I invite all students, family, staff, and community members to attend at least one of our school events that spotlight the glimmering talents of our rising stars. March is also Women's History Month, with International Women's Day recognized on March 8. This historic day founded in 1911 by the International Conference of Women was established to reflect, appreciate, and celebrate the contributions and impact of women through our history. This year's theme is "Celebrating Women Who Tell Our Stories." When we make the conscious effort to weave women's voices into our intertwining story, our history becomes more inclusive and comprehensive. As the United Nations declares, gender equality and the empowerment of women and girls is not just a goal in itself, but a key to sustainable development, economic growth, and peace and security. Be sure to look for features from the division and our schools throughout March, as our schools, staff members, and students recognize the barrier-breaking achievements of women in history. And speaking of breaking barriers, National School Social Work Week is an opportunity for our community to acknowledge the challenging but rewarding work of our school's social workers and thank them for their heartfelt compassion in changing lives every day. With a history steeped in improving attendance and making connections between home and school, the National Association of Social Workers designate the week of March 5 through the 11th to recognize and celebrate the women and men who support students with mental health, behavioral challenges, and provide family support. Often unsung heroes to students in crisis, I want to thank our school's social workers for their transformative work with our students and the countless contributions that they continue to make to our communities. In conclusion, National Read Across America Day is held annually on March 2 to celebrate the magic of reading. Tomorrow, PWCS celebrates the joy of reading and the transformative power of literacy. While our schools have many activities planned to celebrate reading, I hope our families will complement our school's efforts to cultivate a love of reading by encouraging our students to read at home. Together, we can partner to ensure a book in the hand of every child. Yesterday signaled the last day of Black History Month. And in closing, I want to thank all of our schools who invited me to attend their Black History Month celebrations, many of them which were organized for students by students. It was inspiring to hear our students' voices and witness their many talents on display as they recognized the impact and influence of notable African Americans in our nation's history. At this time, I would like to invite our Chief Financial Officer, John Wallingford, to come forward as a part of the Superintendent's Time to provide a brief update on the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2023-24. The last presentation that we provided, we did inform the board and the public that there were some changes at the state level as it relates to funding and the impact that that may have on our fiscal year 24 budget. And so we do want to give an update, as we do have a few sessions coming forward before we vote on, make any decisions on the budget. And so we want to make sure we inform both the board and the public of the updates that we are aware of to date. Mr. Wallingford?
Thank you, Dr. McDade, Mrs. Wall, members of the board. Brief update on what's taking place in Richmond with our friends in the General Assembly. On February 25, the General Assembly adjourned, excuse me, adjourned, signed a DA, signed a D, and couldn't resolve the differences that they had between the House amendments and the Senate amendments to the Governor's introduced budget. So what they did was they passed what has been referred to as a skinny budget, and that budget actually reduces revenue to Prince William County Schools by just a few million dollars in both Fiscal 23 and Fiscal 24. We shouldn't be too nervous about that reduction. The General Assembly is going to have to come back sometime in the next several weeks and resolve the differences that they could not resolve in conference. One other thing that I wanted to mention, and that is to hold harmless on the VDOE calculation error that everybody's aware of. You've heard that they've held us harmless, and that's true to a certain extent. They've held us harmless to the extent of about $800,000 in Fiscal 23 on an error that was about $4.3 million. And then in Fiscal 24, they have not held us harmless at all. Expectations, we received information, some of this information I got today at 2:00. There's still information coming out. We don't know when they will reconvene in their special session. And so what we're doing is we're paying attention closely. I speak with Jim Counsel almost on a daily basis at this point to try and make sure I know what's going on. And those are my remarks. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I also would like to provide an update on security, and then we can take questions from either John or Vern at that time, but we do have a short presentation. We did have three community meetings thus far, one at Gainesville, one at Freedom, and one at Woodbridge. And then we have a webinar that'll be held tomorrow with demonstrations on the AI technology that we have shared information with the public and the board on. And so I do want to provide the board with a summary of what we've learned thus far. And so at this time, Mr. Vern Bach will bring some qualitative data that we've gathered from the three meetings that we've held.
Thank you, Dr. McDade, and good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. I'm happy to be here tonight, and I'm here tonight to update you on our engagement efforts that have been occurring across the district over the past month. And a special thank you, I do want to thank all of our risk management staff who have been out with us during the presentation, our school safety staff, to include our community service officers, our school, community service officers, our school security officers, Prince William County Police Department leadership have been out to the events as well, and folks from Evolve. I just want to update you, really, these updates or engagement efforts across the community are focused on a multi-layered approach to safety. And one of those layers is the weapons detection system known as Evolve. And you know, I've been in front of you, we presented this information at the joint board meeting with our school board and the Board of Supervisors. Just to reiterate to you, just a few points about the technology. It really is designed, it's not a metal detector system. It's designed to detect weapons and ignores harmless items coming through, your typical household items. It's touchless. It has 10 times the rate that people can pass through than your traditional metal detector, and it's a very effective system. Just to highlight to you some of the community engagement efforts that we've been involved with, this really starts back as early as February 6, engaging with our elementary principals around this technology and demonstrating to them. And then followed by on February 9, meeting with our secondary principals and demonstrating this technology to them. We did present to our Student Senate on February 13, and that was a very engaging evening. We got some great questions from our students that evening, and I want to thank our students who participated. Later that evening, we met with our Safe Schools Advisory Council and demoed the technology. And then, most recently, February 22, we presented to the Gainesville High School community, or it was a community forum at Gainesville High School. We had folks from all across the county, and I think we had about 70 folks attend that evening. Each session, we've had a QR code where folks are able to submit their questions real time while we're going through the present, the multi-layered approach to safety, including the Evolve technology. And we answered all the questions that we received throughout each of those evenings. And again, we followed that evening by February 27 at Freedom High School. Again, had about 70 folks in attendance that evening. And then last night, we rounded out our in-person sessions at Woodbridge Senior High School, again, between 65 and 70 folks. Wonderful questions throughout the evenings we will have, and I want to put a We will have, and I want to put a plug in here, we do have one final session that's scheduled tomorrow evening at 7:00. It is a Zoom webinar session. We will be doing a demonstration there and engaging in entertaining questions and feedback that evening as well. At each session, we did have interpreter services, and we will have interpreter services on our March 2nd, tomorrow evening webinar. Again, I wanted to reiterate, folks who participated were able to submit their questions and feedback through QR code. I'll show you a little about that data. I just want to share with folks that on our district website, underneath Risk Management, we do have a tab there for our weapon scanning technology. There is an active feedback link there. So folks watching tonight, if you couldn't make a session, you can submit your feedback through the website and provide your questions there as well, and we'll reach out to you as best we can and answer those questions. I will say the majority of the feedback that we've received has been very positive. We've had a lot of media focus over the past several days through NBC4, DC Now, ABC7, and Inside Nova have all featured the technology over the past several days, and through the QR code feedback, we've received over 100 questions. And here, broke that down and tried to synthesize that data as best we could into some categories that you have in front of you there. Forty-eight, the bulk of the questions were around the device operation. We did have some questions around how the data would be stored, and if we're storing the data on students, and if Evolve would have access to that. They do not, that is data that's stored locally with us. The general safety question, you know, is this safe? Is the radio frequencies emitting from this device safe? And then six of those questions were miscellaneous. And then you can see the breakdown of who asked those questions. And so 84 questions from parents, we did have some students participate, some community members, or eight from employees, I'm sorry, and one from a student, and we did have some from community members as well. I do, again, want to stress, tomorrow night, we will have our webinar. For folks who couldn't attend, that will be at 7:00 PM. Information is on our website there for that, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. One additional point before I prepare for your questions, we did, at the end of the culmination of every evening, we allowed folks to come up on stage, folks who wanted to walk through the technology with a test piece and go through the technology were able to do that. Our Evolve folks were on hand to answer questions from families as well. So I think overall, it's been a very productive engagement, and looking forward to rounding it out tomorrow night. And we will, we did add one additional engagement session. Dr. McDade is asking us to come out and present to the Human Rights Student Leadership Council on March 16th. So we'll be doing a demonstration for that group on March 16th. So at this time, that concludes my report.
Madam Chair, that concludes the superintendent's report, and if the board has any questions on the presentations, we'll take those questions at this time.
Okay, great, thank you. So we have Mr. Bach and Mr. Wallingford here. Thank you both for the update on the budget and the community information meetings. Are there questions from board members? Ms. Jessie, would you like to start out?
I don't have a, I don't have a question, I just wanted to make a comment. You know, I've been here for quite some time, and I was talking to Ron Crowe, and I said, Ron Crowe, we've been here since there were big notebooks, and it was not just a presentation of the new security system, but you provided information to parents about the safety in our schools, and I'm really pleased with the fact that principals do not have to worry about those rock in the doors where doors are open and what happened in Texas. I just think it was well done, it was well professionally done. I think you handled all the questions well, and I just want to thank you guys for a wonderful presentation. I want to thank Dr. McDade, and I think Mrs. Williams, you went to Charlotte, North Carolina, and looked at the system. My husband said, and he's in the audience, he said, you know, you know, I feel good about what's happening in Prince William County in terms of security, and I do too, and I've been here for quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. I do want, and I did fail to mention, my apologies, we had several board members in attendance at those sessions, so thank you.
Mr. Wilk and then Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Both of you, thank you for your service and the work you've done. I was able to be at the Freedom one, which I thought was a very good thorough presentation. Just a question, during some of the Q&amp;A time, some topics came up, some very passionate topics came up. Bullying was one I remembered particularly with Freedom. Did we try to track those people down and get contact information as best as possible so we could follow up on their concerns?
Yes, sir, we did. And, you know, we stuck around for several minutes after the presentations, invited folks who shared various concerns with us to come down and have individual conversations, and yes, we did gather that information and have passed along, and are passing along that information.
Right, Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to share the same statements that Ms. Jessie made. I have now attended two of the three sessions, and to your comfort, Mr. Wilk, I stayed till, like, I think the end. We all walked out together with security, closing at Freedom, so I do appreciate the extra time that was spent speaking to the community members or family members that stayed in the audience, that had questions outside and above and beyond the Evolve system. I don't think we can highlight enough how much of a well-thought-out and thorough presentation was made. I would highly encourage members of the public, if they weren't able to make the two, excuse me, the three presentations that I've already made, to attend the virtual one, because it is much more detailed than just the Evolve system. We really do speak to the safety and security measures division-wide that we have either implemented, are planning to implement, or in the process of upgrading. There's quite a bit of activity going on. I will say that one of the things that I've noticed is our view as a division of what encompasses safety and security versus our school families' view of how they define safety and security. So I think as we move forward, it would be nice to maybe outline that or have separate information sessions, because it's very hard when you're there and there's a parent or a student who has an issue that they believe falls under safety and security, but we don't necessarily define it that way as a division. I think that also causes some friction. So that's not a critique, it's just, it's an operational, how we organize within ourselves versus how a family coming in would view something, and those would be two naturally different things. So I think that moving forward, that would be very helpful, and I will agree with Mr. Wilk. I did hear a lot of comments in regards to bullying at the presentation at Freedom and a little bit at Woodbridge, but mostly Freedom, and I think that it might be worth our while to host something with regards to bullying so that parents can be more informed about all of the programming that we do have currently in our division with regards to bullying and where they are at different levels, because elementary has a different program in the middle, middle has a different program in the high school, how we also work in conjunction with some community organizations like Paton's Project and some other things that we've had a longstanding relationship with for years. And I feel that that will sort of close the loop on a lot of those concerns, because while we have a different view, it doesn't matter if you're a parent who's upset. And so I think that we should acknowledge that from that vein. Otherwise, John, I was wondering if you could speak to a little bit about, sorry, to switch gears, but I think it's important, I know the BOCS just announced or had their initial preview for their budget last night, just for the public's education, if you could speak a little bit about how that process interacts with our process. I think I've run into a few members of the community recently who feel that the BOCS has ownership of the school division because of funding, and I am not the best person from a financial perspective to explain how they tie together. So I was wondering if you could speak to that and how that folds into our budget process.
So financially, thank you for the question, it's actually a very good question. Financially, we are dependent on Prince William County Schools, both from an accounting standpoint and in the law. They must approve our budget. What they don't have is the opportunity to control how we spend, with one exception. They can either adopt our budget at the division-wide level, and for us this year, it's going to be about $2.4 billion, or they can approve our budgets on a categorical basis, within those categories defined by the Code of Virginia. If I recall correctly, there's either nine or 12 of those. So when there are questions about how we spend, and I know the meeting last night, there were a couple of questions about how Prince William County Schools will spend their money, how much money will be spent on collective bargaining, there were several kinds of questions like that. It would be a reasonable thing for us to share that with them, but they certainly don't have control over how we spend it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think that's very helpful, because there's a lot of budget activity going on this time of year.
Yes, there is.
And do we anticipate there being a delay? I know that we don't, that you don't have a crystal ball at the state level, but are we hearing anything about maybe a delayed budget approval? And if so, how does that affect us in our decision-making?
So another very good question. Like I said, I've been speaking with Jim Council almost on a daily basis over the past week or two. Right now, we're uncertain as to what and when it will happen at the state level. Tomorrow morning at 7:00, I'll be on the phone with Jim, seeing if anything's happened today. And the only thing we can really do is sit and wait. We've had two or three occurrences over the past 10 years where the General Assembly did not get their budget done on time, and what we've ended up doing is passing an interim budget effectively and then going back for adoption when we get our actual numbers. So the next week or two really will tell. The timeline, both for us and for the County Board of Supervisors, to get things done is very tight. There's really not a whole lot of leeway. And again, the Code of Virginia actually stipulates, May 15th, they have to be done. And for us theoretically, they're supposed to have a budget adopted by May 1st. So we'll see how that all plays out.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you both for the update tonight. I know, Mr. Wallingford, I know a lot of things are unfolding, so I appreciate the update and the conversation. Ms. Williams, your questions, thank you. Will the information that you updated today, will that be on the website for the budget? I know that's like one PowerPoint, but will you put any of this on the budget website?
Yes, ma'am, two things. This presentation will be on the website tomorrow morning. In addition to that, I've left with the clerk, copies of our proposed budget book. It's about a 300-pager, it's two or three, three or four inches thick. That will be posted on the website tomorrow morning, and you have access to it as you leave this evening.
You read my mind, that was my next, thank you. So thank you, Mr. Wallingford. The other question I have is about the Evolve system. I would love, if it's okay, I know that sometimes like the Student Senate might be a safe place and work conversations, but it would be great to, and I know that there's more conversations coming with students, to just get their feedback, or maybe a summary of their feedback on Evolve systems, if that's possible. And I know that they included a link to provide feedback from the community.
We did.
Is there a close date on that?
We were leaving it open right now. We haven't decided when to close that, it's currently open on the website. The QR code, again, will be active tomorrow night, but there is a separate link on the website underneath of Risk Management and Weapon Screening Technology. And I don't, we haven't discussed any plans to close that down.
Will we announce it if we, when we close it?
Sure.
Yep, so we'll do, we'll do some communication blasts in the scoop, I'll put it in the end-of-week Friday letter, to just give people enough time to be able to weigh in, so it will be definitely open at least for another month.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. The information that you put today, will that be posted on the Evolve website?
On the Evolve website or?
Your?
Our website.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, generally, what we present here, board meetings, is posted, so absolutely.
It's hard to find sometimes in board docs, that's why I was, and then I think...
We can post it on the Safety and Security app.
Yes, yep.
And I think that's it. I appreciate your presentation tonight, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'll just add that I attended the community meeting at Gainesville High School, and I thought it was awesome. I especially liked the QR code, it was a really great way to manage questions. I thought that worked really smoothly, and I felt like the questions from the community were really good. They thought of all kinds of questions that I, some that I thought of and some that I hadn't. And I especially appreciated the opportunity to walk through the technology and see it in action. I think that was the most fun part. But I also, and I didn't expect this, but I very much appreciated the discussion that came before we discovered, before we discussed the AI, all of the layers of safety mitigation that we have, that we have in place in Prince William County Schools, that we have put in place recently in our schools, and then some of our plans to also increase the layers of mitigation, because I think it's very important for us all to, you know, understand that while we cannot reduce risks to zero, there are a number of things that we can do that will greatly reduce our risks of various kinds, reduce risks of various kinds. So I really appreciated that discussion and wanted to thank everybody who, from the community and also staff who staffed that, but also community members who came. And I had a question about, from Mr. Wallingford, and I think it's probably the question that Ms. Williams asked, so maybe I already, maybe we already got the answer, but my question was the impact on our budget process, if any, as a result of the delays that are happening at the state level. And I am assuming the discussion of the May 1st and the May 15 deadlines may make it really tight for us, like you said. But I guess my question is, are we going to move forward with the budget that we have? And then if the numbers change, then we'll make an adjustment as needed in May? Is that kind of what we're looking at?
That's the current plan. There may be changes coming from the county side as well, and we'll have to adjust and deal with that on our current timeline, unless the General Assembly gets done, you know, in the next week or two, which I frankly don't think is likely.
So we'll still have a work session on the 8th, and then we'll have our vote on the 15th?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Are there any other questions, anybody else? Okay, super, thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
So, moving on to committee updates, item 17? We have two committee updates that will be shared tonight. We will start with the Safe Schools Advisory Council. Ms. Zargarpur and I sit on that committee as board member, so I'll ask Ms. Zargarpur to talk on that issue.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. So we'll go to January's meeting. On January 9th, the council met to receive an update from Risk Management and Security Services on recent school initiatives. We discussed updates to the Crisis Management Plan, the Raptor Alert System, safety inspections and audit, AI technology, CCTV installations, after-action reports, and the upcoming purchase of the 880 megahertz radio replacements. One of the things that I have to say I'm jealous about is some of the improvements that are coming, we're going to have, I think, some community, the community will be engaged on this in March, correct? Yeah, so they've made some improvements that are just really just streamlined some information for families, for students, so I'm excited about this thing coming out. On February 13th, the council met to become familiar with the weapon screening technology known as Evolve, we've heard plenty of here tonight. So in this report, we were going to just remind people that we had some community meetings, and tomorrow we have the Zoom meeting, so if you haven't seen it, haven't looked at it, please take a look at it. It's a big, it's a big conversation, it's really interesting technology. It wasn't what I expected when we got the presentation at the Safe Schools. It was very, it was really, it's so fascinating how well it worked. We even talked about how it's ADA compliant, you can have some of these things at, you can move it around your building, talked about like plans that each school would have to consider, so it's not like they're just trying to put something in the doorway and we're done. It's far more information than just what we've talked about this evening. So Ms. Wall, do you have anything to add to that? No, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I thought that was great. So the other committee update is the School Health Advisory Board that Ms. Jackson and I serve on, and the board met, the board meets every three months, so it met on February 17th to receive an update on immunization noncompliance within PWCS and to discuss a partnership with George Mason and Partners Clinic to provide vaccines for students who remain noncompliant with required immunizations. The Division reported some statistics on immunization compliance, and as of February 10th, the number is significantly smaller than the August 2022 numbers, which is a really good thing, and it's a testament to the good work that our Division employees are doing. Their focus has been to improve the ability to get information out to families, and they're working on increasing student involvement in the messaging as well. So, that's all really good. The other thing is, we met, welcomed Dr. Vanessa Gaddis, who is President and CEO of Prince William County Community Foundation. And we had a good discussion about the Health and Wellness Expo that they conduct to bring resources under one roof. And this organization operates the Chow Wagon Program, and they are planning a community back-to-school event where they will be giving out backpacks and school supplies to our families in need, and that is scheduled for August 11th and 12th. And they are hoping to also include dental screenings and vaccination opportunities at that event as well, which I think is very beneficial. It's a very good partnership that we are developing here. The two locations will be Freedom High School and Unity Braxton Middle School. Again, this is in August. I guess it's never too soon to start planning for the next school year. Let's see. They also informed the Health Advisory Board of a scholarship opportunity for students through that organization, and they invited teachers to apply for a number of $250 microgrants for classroom supplies. So, I would encourage teachers to take a look at that. And that's the update from the School Health Advisory Board. Sorry, it's my turn still. So, we'll now move on to Board Matters, item 1801. Sorry. Oh. Policy. Oh, it's not on here, okay. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, so we are now on 1801, Revision of Policy 541. The Prince William County School Board will receive information on the proposed revision of Policy 541 Holidays.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I would like to invite our Chief Human Resource Officer, Dr. Donna Eagle, to come forward and provide a brief overview of some revisions that we will need to make to Policy 541 to address holidays that already exist in the school division but need to be updated in the actual policy.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. Good evening, Madam Vice Chair Wall and members of the school board. So, what you have today is our recommendation to make revisions to the holiday policy to reflect the four religious holidays that were added into the school calendar in October of 2020 for the 21-22 school year and have carried forward into the 22-23 school year. These four religious holidays were added to reflect the rich diversity of our Division. We're also recommending the addition of Juneteenth, which is a state and federal holiday. Be happy to answer any questions that the board has regarding the recommendations.
Does anybody have a question or comment?
Ms. Williams? Just curious, with the language, don't we have to adopt state and federal holidays? It's not really a recommendation, right?
No, we don't have to adopt. Actually, like Columbus Day, for instance, is a state and federal holiday, and we don't adopt that in our calendar. So, there is no requirement for us to honor state and federal holidays. However, in this case, we are recommending that we do add Juneteenth to our holidays.
Thank you. I did not know that. I appreciate that.
Anybody else have a question or comment on this? So, this is up for information tonight, correct?
Correct.
And be up for action next time we meet?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I guess in the meantime, if anybody has a question, they can reach out?
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, on to, I'm just going to check the agenda. Now, on to Board Matters. Last time, we started, I believe, with Mr. Wilk. So, I think we'll start at this end. Nope? Did we? I don't remember.
B knows.
B knows, okay. Would you like to go? Oh, Wilk, you'll go?
Yes.
Not all, jump at once.
So, I typically, are we starting? Clock? Okay, cool. Yeah, no. So, I typically use this time to rattle off anywhere I've gone in the past two weeks, but I'm going to do something a little different this time today to address some topics that I've been thinking about briefly. For those of you who don't know, I am in charge of getting my boys ready on the bus in the morning. Well, why would you know? But there you go. My wife is a high school teacher and is gone well before the elementary buses arrive. So, there are parents at the bus stop every morning, and I use this opportunity to kind of get a temperature check and learn what their thoughts are about things or concerns. First, I want to mention the topic that we have had some chatter about. Outside of cyberbullying, social media plays a critical role in our schools. As a parent, I have concerns about any employee posting photos with students in school on social media accounts such as Facebook, Twitter, TikTok, that are not open to all parents. I personally would be incensed if I heard from others that photos of my son were on social media account that I could not access without explicit approval. I don't believe, as a parent, I should have to hope a friend request is accepted to see if their children are on a school employee's social media account without permission. If you're going to post a classroom or school event, do it on a public page so that all families can be involved. I do not believe staff should be allowed to pick and choose which parents or citizens can see the school happenings. There is always the option to not have a class or staff page at all. With social media also comes the topic of bullying. During my office hours last weekend, a parent shared some disturbing stories about bullying of her children last year at school. I also attended the Freedom Community Evolve session, as I mentioned already, on Monday night, and the issue of bullying came up again. I support the Division and the schools remaining diligent when issuing appropriate punishments. Although our goal is to keep students in school, there are times when I feel suspensions are appropriate and needed. Finally, I would be remiss if I did not include my concerns about Dumfries Elementary School. Before my arrival on the board in 2016 during the renovation cycle, a decision was made not to complete the overhaul of the building. But given the limitations that currently exist, I would ask my colleagues to consider placing Dumfries on the future CIP. And that will be it. Thank you.
Ms. Zagarpur?
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Yes, it is Music in Our Schools Month. I didn't mention it earlier because I was saving a little bit for here. I am a music educator, certified to teach K-12, and I have, I've taught pre-K, actually, all the way up through adults. And I do believe music enhances your life, but there are studies out there that talks about how. So, just give you a few tonight. It enhances your vocabulary. Students who study piano for three consecutive years demonstrate higher vocabulary and verbal sequencing scores than nonmusical peers. But how does that work in our schools? Well, our children get music once a week for 45 minutes, starting in kindergarten, and they develop their musical skills all the way through fifth grade, some schools, fourth grade, where they're allowed to also take strings classes. This is going to further develop their fine motor skills, their aural skills, their spatial skills, all kinds of things that are going to help develop them, not as just a musician, but as a human being. They have the option in middle school to continue with that instrument or to jump into band or chorus. They can continue through high school. Music also supports cognitive function. I firmly believe that when you are a new parent and you sit there with your baby and you do the little sing-song things or the little rhymes, this is pre-reading skills, and it's essential for what your child needs as they go through school. Our elementary music teachers do this every single day. It develops reading and writing ability, it encourages self-esteem, increases verbal memory, boosts IQ in some studies, develops empathy, raises math and history scores in some studies, reduces aggressive behavior, teaches planning ability, encourages perseverance, which is a really big deal these days. If you look at kids, they get so much instant gratification, and learning how to learn is really important. You can do that through music. Improves articulation, protects against dementia, which we don't need to worry about as five-year-olds, but when we're like 50-something, we go on and start thinking about those things. Stop laughing. Facilitates anxiety management, boosts standardized test scores, refines perceptual motor skills, nurtures life happiness. Also, just want to give a shout out to those foundational teachers, no matter what you are. If you are a foundational teacher, you are a preschool teacher, a general music teacher, a reading specialist, a math specialist, kindergarten through fifth grade, you are a foundational teacher. And we can't have amazing programs in middle and high school without you, so I just want to thank everybody there. This week, I got to watch the Osborne Park Girls Basketball Team win their regional championship, so woo, go Jackets! And I just saw that Saunders won another wrestling match. Congratulations to all our student athletes. I hope everyone has an absolute fabulous evening.
Thank you. Right, Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. There, as we talked about tonight, a number of things the board is working on, including the budget and the trainings at Evolve. I was able to attend the last week at Gainesville High School where Mrs. Jessie was and Mrs. Wall. I'm also going to just remind everybody, even though it was said earlier, there's a virtual one tomorrow, and to make sure you register ahead of time. During the last meeting, the last board meeting, we approved the boundary for Rosemont Lewis, or the school, excuse me, at Rosemont Lewis. And I appreciate all the community involvement and support behind the current plan. The Rosemont Lewis naming will be, there are two being held virtually, one on Wednesday, March 22nd at 7:00 PM, another one on Wednesday, March 29th at 7:00 PM. You can watch the web story on the link on PWC website and to learn more information about how to register virtually. Yesterday was Rare Disease Day, which affects 4% to 5% of the population. This day is designed to spotlight rare diseases with the hope to accelerate its understanding and conversations. Oftentimes, with a rare disease comes the potential lack of knowledge or study. This month is also Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, which we passed in the Consent Agenda a few meetings ago. And I just, well, probably celebrate it at schools, but I just want to just, again, it's just to bring further awareness to the needs and barriers that people with disabilities, including developmental disabilities, that sometimes face. I appreciate celebrating all of these resolutions, including the Black History Month, which just ended, and then the more celebrations that I'm sure schools will have for Women's History and other heritage recognitions in the month of March. During the last few weeks, I enjoyed attending the Heritage Literacy Night at Sea Clay Wood. It was a wonderful night, and I'm just, thank you to Timberwolves for creating a welcoming environment. And I also got to see a wrestling match for the opening season at the Norxville School. These examples of artwork are amazing, so thank you to Ripon Middle, which is in Ms. Williams' district, for sharing it with us. It's nice to sit here and see such exemplary work. I'm looking forward to celebrating theater in the Schools Month at some future shows. And good luck to the robotics this weekend, and thank you to those who spoke tonight and for coming. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also, again, would like to give a big shout out to Ripon for displaying their artwork. It's wonderful to see so many clay pieces and 3D sculptures, and the dog over there behind the clerk is amazing, just absolutely phenomenal. Want to, again, highlight that today is the first day of Women's History Month. I would like to take a moment to honor my fellow women board members. We have all served during a historic time in all of our lives through the pandemic. I want to just really give pause and thanks for three of our board members, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Wall, and Ms. Zagarpur. You came in during a time where you've never served before, you're still here and still standing. I believe that, and the work that you put through, put in with all of us, some who are more veteran, we all came together and made a fantastic team. And as women, we don't always honor ourselves or give ourselves space to be honored, so I wanted to do that and take a moment to really acknowledge the hard work that you put in. To Ms. Jessie, thank you for always being a school board mentor for mine. I appreciate all of the education and love that you have shown me and allowed me to grow as a school board member, and also one of our longest-serving board members at this period of time, too, and for a lifetime of service to our school division. I wanted to thank Dr. McDade for being our historic first woman superintendent of our school division, and to all of our staff who are women who serve. We have a very well-rounded and diverse staff here in Prince William County Schools. Our clerks, amazing women. I know Lillian is not here, but special shout out to her. We don't always give ourselves the time to see our own greatness. We just get in and do the job, and I thought it was worth noting because it's time to stop and smell the roses while we're still here. So, thank you to all of you. Moving on from that, I think the security update has been said and said again. I want to take a moment to highlight Freedom High School. I attended the Black History Month program last week. I promised them that I would honor their student entrepreneur, so I am going to do that. Mr. Jamal Thurman is the creator of his own clothing line, to which I had the honor of purchasing a hoodie, because I love hoodies, and this is it. So, for all of you, they had student tables. So, please, if you're interested in purchasing, he is selling his products, he's building a website now. In addition to Mr. Thurman, Jemaya Golson is a budding hairdresser, Jemaya Smith is a budding barber, and then we also have Rosie Chavez, who has her own clothing line. In addition to that, Freedom High School will be having a mental health fair on March 25th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And very briefly, I know I have three seconds, if you'll indulge me for 30. I just want to highlight the virtual school programs because we don't talk about them, and the new principal, Mr. Gillespie, has done a fantastic job in coordinating all of the virtual school programs. They had an author visit from Gordon Corman, a cook-along, and zoology, and a Black History Month program. I'll save the rest for our next meeting, but they are wonderful programs, so thank you.
All right. Ms. Jessie?
Good evening. Do I have that slide? Which slide do we have? Okay. This is, I have to brag about this. You know, Woodbridge High School is a school of the arts and technology, they don't have the titles, but this girl is Sophia Shahad, I think I pronounced her, she has the voice. So, I've called her, I said to her, "Did you ever think about going on a television show?" This school has an arts team, a choral team, that's just amazing. So, the director of the choir, Joe Shapiro, they gave me a little serenade, and Mr. Carlos Castro, who is Project Lead the Way. Thank you. Lori, would you put this up for me? Look at this, guys. I think you guys got plaques and all these big banners. Guess what I got? This was designed by Carlos Castro and his art teacher, his name is Adrianne Lovin. And I wanted to say to them that I appreciated them, and this little girl, Sophia, you are a person to watch. And Mr. Castro, Mr. Castro is also the voice, as you know, and Mr. Castro is also the person who does Project Lead the Way. And when you do those robotics, you know, when you go to Woodbridge High School, he does all that background work. He was doing that work before we had all the help. So, I wanted to say that. The last thing I want to talk a little bit about is the Courageous Four, and I don't know if we have anything for that. The Courageous Four, Dr. McDade and I were on a panel when they talked about these four women. I think it's appropriate because we're entering, we just entered, we just ended Black History and moving into Women's History. These four women, and I don't have, we couldn't come up with a picture, but they are Fannie Fitzgerald, Zella Brown, Maxine Coleman, and Mary Porter. Zella Brown is the only of the four people, women, who is alive today. And a lot of people say that Mr. Bevel, and I did know Mr. Bevel, that he was in charge of sending these women to schools overnight, but it was really Mr. Herb Saunders. Herb Saunders went in those schools and told those women, "You will be desegregating the Prince William County Schools overnight, and I want you to know how important it was for him," because I attended his funeral, and at his funeral, those four women were considered to be his honorary palveras. When I called Fannie Fitzgerald about the naming of the school, she said, "It's been 40 years, and I don't know what's going to happen with history in the state of Virginia, but we need to know our history." And I want to congratulate the Courageous Four. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Williams, did you want to add something?
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to be perfectly clear. I am not advertising for free. I purchased this in case anyone, just wanted to know, my own funds. We have to declare, decline, excuse me, disclose those things, so I just wanted to make everyone aware. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and wrap up. It is said that a child that is encouraged grows up with confidence. That's a Ugandan proverb, and I love it because encouraging a child... I love it because encouraging a child to grow, growing up with confidence is a wonderful thing. And it's wonderful to see the level of encouragement that our students receive from their families, their teachers, their leaders, and their friends. I want to thank the citizens and parents who came in tonight to speak to us at Citizen Comment time. And I wanted to say that your comments are important to me and to the board, and you help us become aware of issues and concerns that need our attention. So thank you for coming in tonight. These are really busy times. This time of year, just, it just escalates from here on out until the end of school in June. I was able to visit a number of activities over the last couple of weeks. Unity Braxton for a girls' basketball game against Parkside. Battlefield Pre-Assessment Concert for Orchestra with Bull Run and Reagan Middle students in attendance, which was awesome. A Spelling Bee at Reagan Middle, a family dance at Gravely. Oh my goodness, there were like 800 people in that room. It was crazy and fantastic. Bull Run Honor Roll Celebration for 7th and 8th graders. There was one for 6th graders. I didn't make it to that one, but I loved that. It was just celebrating students for doing their core function, which is working hard and earning good grades, learning material. And I also got to meet with the Newsletter Club at Bull Run, and they asked me a whole bunch of questions, and that was really fun. And last night, I met with Battlefield's Principal's Advisory Committee meeting, and we discussed the budget, the school's budget, and then just the Division's budget, which was a great discussion. I really appreciate the effort that the Division is making to communicate with the community about our safety and security posture and initiatives and seeking community feedback. I really appreciate that. To students competing in VEX Robotics State Competition this weekend, good luck. And best of luck to the students competing in the FIRST Robotics Competition in Blacksburg this weekend as well. And to all students and music teachers who are involved in orchestra, band, and choir, who have been gearing up for their assessments, also best wishes to you. And I want to congratulate the team from Bull Run who earned top honors in the Stock Market Game Regional Competitions. I should probably join your team so I can learn how to do that. To our many student athletes who've turned out top-notch performances on the court, the field, the gym, the mat, but aren't state champions, but you're regional champions or district champions. We love what you're doing, and we're so proud of you as well. And one final shout out to Campbell Lascoti, a senior at Battlefield, for advancing to the Poetry Out Loud State Finals. She's one of 12 semifinalists out of 2,600 students who entered in Virginia. So that's in March, on March 10th in Richmond. So good luck to Campbell Lascoti. And then to all, I say, by small and simple means, our great things brought to pass. Keep on doing small and simple things, and together we can be great and keep up that good work. And there being nothing further, to come before this board, I now declare this meeting adjourned.